Being the Parker Town Council at 7:00 on August 15th, all council members are present. Would you please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. First up on our agenda is public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for town residents and other interested individuals to speak on items not on the agenda. This comment period is limited to the first 30 minutes of the meeting, and then if we have any carryover in this well-packed town hall, we will finish that at the end of the meeting. But we'll give each individual an opportunity to speak for three minutes. So anyone wishing to make public comment at this time, come up, state your name and address for the record, and we'll get you started. If you want to do it as a total, I'll give you six minutes total.
Yeah, we don't need that.
Great, okay.
Good evening, Council. Logan Hancock, from Windsor, 489 S. Wars Drive.
Jesse, could you make sure that there's a little green light on at the bottom?
There it is. Can you hear me now?
There you go. Okay, would you repeat your address for the record?
Yeah, Jesse Snyder. It's, uh, what? I don't even know my own address. I live off Matzenbacher Way, sorry.
Okay, so right on Todd, left on...
Yeah, Clark Farms, yeah.
All right, perfect. Go ahead.
So, we're here more to educate. I own legacy carts out of Windsor, Colorado. We have been selling to a lot of residents down here in Parker, and you guys are going to start seeing a lot more of these as this becomes a bigger thing. We specialize in what are called low-speed vehicles. And what that is, a lot of people would mistake them for golf carts. And what they are is basically a smaller electric vehicle that allows people to recreate on anything that's 35 miles an hour under. And we have partnered with numerous townships at this point. And again, we've done this with numerous city councils, just a professional courtesy that you guys obviously want to know what's going on in your community. It is 100% through the state of Colorado. I've worked extensively through the Department of Revenue with this. Those guys, we are in very, we're in tune with those guys. Because again, I was kind of the forefront of this. And what this is really targeting is getting people out recreating in a reasonable manner outside of their vehicle, right? People in smaller communities such as Parker, Windsor, Boulder, a lot of these other communities are taking full advantage of these for the sheer fact that it gives people the ability to get around town and use alternate routes rather than the busier, consistent there. You can, you know, go through, call it neighborhoods. You can take different pathways to your destination. Because again, most people aren't going to want to be on a main busy road, even if it is 35 and under. People are going to take alternate routes. A lot of people are taking full advantage for gas prices alone because they have gotten out of hand. And, you know, I got some packets here for you guys to review. And, you know, if this can, you guys will obviously decide whether this is worthy of, you know, a workshop session or whatnot. But I know that you guys' police department is going to have a lot of questions because a lot of people don't understand what these things are. They don't know the laws behind it, and I've been well immersed into it. So I'm here as a service, answer any questions to the police department. And again, we are actually partnering with a lot of police departments and using them for their smaller community get-togethers like fairs and, you know, downtown gatherings so they have a way of getting from point A to point B with, you know, a cop cart. So we've been doing a lot of different things, and honestly, it's been huge for these communities that have been growing for the sheer fact of parking. You can park two of these in one parking spot. And again, it gives people the ability to use that other means of transportation like people would use a bike or a scooter. So they fall in that realm of things. So again, I'm here as a service to you guys, professional courtesy, because you guys will see people. I've sold numerous to people here in Parker, and it will be questions. So again, I got these packets for you guys, and that's really all we had. We will be opening a store here in Parker next spring is our goal. But again, we're forward-thinking, and this is going to be a bigger thing than most people think. So yeah, that's really all we have. Yeah, and the reason why I'm awkwardly staying over here now. So I grew up in Parker here and be operating under, you know, legacy carts and wanting to open up a storefront. So I, you know, I love Parker. It's been awesome. I moved away for quite a few years but came back, and I know a lot of my friends in high school, they all say, you know, we weren't going to, we'll never come back to Park whatever, and now they're all here. Hopefully, also some, you know, low-speed vehicles. But yeah, we're really looking forward to, and just wanted to get out in front of you guys first and just educate and make sure it's not, you know, a kind of a retroactive thing where it's like, what are all, what are all these golf carts driving around and making everyone mad? And they're like, what are you guys doing? So we wanted to come out here, just, yeah, again, educate and let us know if you have any questions and just want to be upfront. And I think it'll be awesome, really, just kind of an entertaining thing to do and a little bit of different twist on, you know, being able to go around, go to the park, go to the pool. So, but yeah, I mean, first things first is safety and also making sure that we're working with the community and not making people angry. So we're trying not to, anyways. And we've noticed there has been some shortcomings from lack thereof, knowledge and educating the general public. Because again, you get, you will, it's not if, it's when people don't understand the difference between a low-speed vehicle and a golf cart. And you get people thinking that their golf cart qualifies as a low-speed vehicle, and it doesn't. It has to be a manufactured vehicle, it has to have a VIN number, you have to register it, you have to plate it, you have to do all those things. Well, again, people will misconstrue that, and that's where it's important to partner with you guys as well as the police department to where it gets launched correctly. Because, and there has been places where it hasn't went optimal from the get-go, and we kind of, because it is a new thing, we know what we did wrong, and that's why I'm trying to get ahead of it and try to just educate. So that's all we got. We appreciate you guys' time.
Great, thank you, guys. And if you'll leave your contact information there, we'll... Thank you, guys, for coming. We appreciate it. And always happy to welcome back a Parker guy, always. All right, next, next up on the agenda is reports, items, and comments from mayor and town council. I think I will start to my right here because somebody had a big event he was in charge of, right, this past weekend?
Yes, our Rury Club, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our Rury Club had Parker Brew Fest. It's our largest fundraiser. As a nonprofit, we actually help raise funds for other nonprofits that are in need and sold out, well-attended, hot, but fun. And no other items are reported.
All right, Councilmember Pogue.
I have not, nothing.
Councilmember Nerrera, sorry.
Oh, Douglass County Youth Initiative last Monday, outstanding. We've got the Youth Congress coming up very shortly in October. Talking about location for that, just a great opportunity for 120 kids to get together and talk about eight items and have elected officials in the room. So I invite our fellow council members and mayor to attend that. I'll get you certain dates here. The organization, I was chair for many years, then the Honorable Jay Carpenter was chair, then he resigned as he left office, and now Commissioner Abeladen is chair of the Youth Initiative. It's nice to have Commissioner at that level, get a little bit more importance when we walk into a room now. Just kidding. But it's a great organization. We do wonderful things. But look for Youth Congress, I'll get you guys information. We'd love to have the room filled. We're looking at a few locations. We've tried, we've done the Capitol in the past. Capitol is going through some renovations. We're probably not going to be able to do that, but we're looking at everything from the Wildlife Experience to whatever it's called now. It'll always be the Wildlife Experience, right? It's always Mahai, it's always a Wildlife Experience. And we'll try to find a good location to host this, but please keep it, keep an open mind for when those dates are coming at you.
Great. Councilman Dyak?
Thank you very much. Let's see, August 3rd was Dr. Cog Day, everybody. Dr. Cog Day, August 3rd. We had the Douglas County Transportation Forum. A couple of things we did there. We talked about Call 2, which was about $18 million of transportation funding coming to Douglas County. The electeds engaged with our fellow technical staff people to get a presentation on how we allocate that. And Parker is getting money, or Parker is being recommended by the electeds here in Douglas County to get funded for $3.596 million for a Parker Road multi-use path from Pine to Stro. So that's a $5 million project. We get $3.6 million of some other entities' money, so I think that's a good thing. Call 3 and 4, looking ahead. We have a couple other pots of money. Call 3 is more of a regional pot. We talked within this group about projects. I think there are a couple other non-Parker projects that might get submitted for Call 3. Parker just doesn't have something of size and scale that would score very well in this, in this call. And then Call 4, which will be towards the end of this year, we'll be talking about, that's roughly $20 million of funding. So we will again go through the process. The staff will take a look and see if we have any projects to submit to our local Douglas County subregional forum to potentially get funded by Dr. Cog. We also talked about the Dr. Cog work session. We talked about the greenhouse gas, the mitigation plan that is, that is coming. There's a state legislative rule, if you will, that we need to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. If we're not at certain targets, which we are not, we have to potentially create, we have to create a mitigation plan. And there is an article out, I think today, I forget where it is, NPR, I think is what it is. Mr. Nathaniel Minor is the author, talked to him a little bit, but he was talking about that and how it affects Douglas County. There's one project, Lincoln, Lincoln Road, which is from Keystone to Oswego, which is going to be, the, the road is going to be put off into a different phase, and we're going to enhance the multimodal features, the trails for that. So that is Douglas County's project that is being influenced by this mitigation plan. On the 9th, as the E-470 Chair, I attended the State Capitol TLRC meeting. This is sort of a get-to-know-you session. E-470 goes down on annual basis, just to introduce themselves to the legislature. There are always new people, and it's always fantastic to go and visit new people. Also had an E-470 Board meeting on the 11th. We had a couple of agreements. Sable Boulevard interchange, E-470's partnering with Improvement District to do that. A couple other smaller projects, agreements. And the big thing out of the E-470 Board is traffic is coming back, but it's still 7% below pre-pandemic levels. So things are, things are looking up compared to a couple years ago, but, you know, again, still slow but sure climb out of this thing. That's all, Mayor. Thanks.
Excellent. Councilmember Barrington?
Thank you, Mayor. I have not had any board meetings since the last council meeting, but I did get the opportunity to attend the Parker Police Department National Night Out. Looked like it was pretty well-attended. It was a lot of fun. And then last week on the 10th, I attended, along with Councilmember Hefta, the Big Picture Meeting. Very informative. Thank you.
Excellent. Councilmember Hefta?
Yes, and I would also add that I think we also saw Councilmember Rivero at the Big Picture Meeting. I think he attended two of them because one was not enough.
He didn't win the trivia for the second one, did he?
Somebody near me did.
And that was very enlightening, just a few interesting statistics on the Big Picture Meeting. The estimated population of Parker in 2022 is about 62,442. Estimate population for 2050 is between 87,000 and 89,000. And our population growth as, growth is about 29.2%. And that is significantly less than 2000 to 2010, in which our population growth rate was 92.3%. So right now, our population growth rate is at 29.2%. I also attended the Douglas County Homeless Initiative, and there was some robust discussion about final sign design and communication strategy. Just as an update, we've been discussing for the past several months, putting out signs throughout Douglas County that would encourage individuals to support a nonprofit instead of giving money to various panhandlers that they might see along the highway instead. And so there was a robust discussion on that final sign and design communication strategy to the folks of Douglas County. And then we also had a robust discussion on faith-based shelter sites from Pastor Mike Polhemus of the Rock Church. Again, this Rock Church is doing a lot to help homeless folks in Douglas County, and they would like to possibly expand that out a little bit. And so we had some good discussion on that.
Great, thank you. And for me, I had the honor and privilege of going out with our local Parker Pickleball group on Saturday. But I want to back up and say to our Recreation Director, Mary Colton, and her staff, Brett, Megan, Alfredo, Aaron, thank you so much for the training that when I got out there, I didn't look totally bad. I just looked marginally bad out there, but it was, it was great. Probably 100 Parker residents out there really lobbying and wanted to show off their sport and what they need. Certainly, there was an ask for 30 more pickleball courts wherever we can fit them in, but I gave them all your cell phone numbers so they could just call you council directly and bypass me. But I also wanted to send out the invite and remind you all that Saturday, the 20th, is the Second Annual Mayor's Day of Service. We will be out cleaning up the trails, parks everywhere around Parker that you can think of, and we are also partnering with the DBA, and we're going to clean up Pike's Peak with Kerry. So it should be a fun event. But, you know, last year, we had just under 1,000 people out on all the trails, and they're hoping it'll be bigger this year. So unfortunately, Parker is quite not dirty enough for an event this big. So we're going to have to think of something else to do next year with it. But it's about 8:00, and then we're also doing the Parker Cruisers Car Fest on Main Street, and that's, it starts at 9:00, I believe. So busy, busy weekend for downtown. All right, let's get to work here. The Consent Agenda is next up. The Consent Agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of the Consent Agenda items unless council votes to remove an item for individual discussion. Ordinances on the Consent Agenda are for introduction only and will not be removed for discussion. So council, you have items 4A through 4D for your review.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda items 4A through 4D, please.
One second. The motion was made by Councilman Rivero, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. Rivero?
Aye.
Pogue?
Nay.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes 5 to 1 with Cheryl Pogue voting no. Next up is our ordinances. Ordinance number 9.170.2 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to approve the Second Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement for the Administration and Operations of a Joint Service Facility between and among South Metro Fire Rescue Authority, Douglas County School District RE1, and the Town of Parker. Mr. Gilbert?
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. As was just indicated, this is an IGA in and amongst three members of our community, the Town of Parker, the South Metro Fire Rescue Authority, and Douglas County School District RE1. This amendment is for the existing IGA related to the Joint Service Facility located at 1701 East Plaza Drive. The Town of Parker has been a member of the Administration and Operation IGA of the Joint Service Facility since November 22nd of 2010. Prior to the construction of the town's Public Work Ops, Public Work Operations Center on House Road, the town maintained a large interest in the Joint Service Facility with a primary interest in storage for snow mitigation materials and the ability to obtain fuel from the town's fleet of equipment. After the completion of the Public Works Operations Center, the town relocated material storage and reduced its stake in the Joint Service Facility. However, the town continues to benefit from the ability to obtain fuel for its fleet from this location. It has been the town's position that having several options to obtain fuel is in the best interest as a redundant means of providing service to the public. The current amendment to the IGA includes adjustments that require board approval for maintenance and repair costs that exceed the previous amount, which was $5,000, and is now set at $10,000 or $15,000 depending on the type of repair being made. The town has taken a reduced interest in those efforts, and as a result, has requested and been approved to have our percentage of allocation for those repairs set to zero. So this is a no-cost and actually a reduction in cost from the previous IGA in our responsibility with regard to this facility. It is my opinion and staff's opinion that we proceed with moving forward with this IGA, and that is my position at this point. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, let's start down the line with staff questions. Councilman Rivero?
So the, it's a joint-use facility, and this IGA, even though our buy-in is reduced to zero at a future date we could reactivate, correct?
I would imagine that we would be able to increase our opportunities at that location. We do have access to their training facility. We have access to where we do our snow prep, and we're going to be doing that out at their facility. So we're still involved, we're still able to use their facilities. It's just the repair costs that are really being identified in this IGA.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yeah, I don't have any questions because all you're doing is changing to meet your needs.
Thank you.
Councilman Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilman Dyak?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
No questions, thanks.
All right, with that, we will open this up for public comment at 7:21. Anyone wishing to make a comment on this ordinance? See, and then we'll close it at 7:21, and we'll bring you back to council for any final thoughts. Councilman Rivero, I'll start with you.
No thoughts.
Nothing for you?
On this topic.
Touche, Mr. Mayor, touche.
Councilman Hendricks?
I got nothing, I'm empty.
Councilman Dyak?
I got nothing.
Councilmember Barrington?
Come on in. Councilmember Hefta?
I'd just like to state that I like the town being able to have multiple options to obtain fuel. So anytime you can have that option, various options and choices to obtain fuel, I appreciate that for our town. Thank you.
Great. Then with that, I will entertain a motion on 9.170.2 on second reading.
I move to approve ordinance number 9.170.2 on second reading.
I'll second that.
Motion is made by Councilman Hendricks, seconded by Councilmember Pogue. Rivero?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that motion passes 6 to 0. Next up is ordinance number 9.351 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance, God, these get longer, a bill for an ordinance to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Board of County Commissioners and the County of Douglas, Douglas County School District, the Town of Castle Rock, the City of Castle Pines, the Town of Larkspur, the City of Lone Tree, the Town of Parker, Highlands Ranch Metro District, Douglas County Libraries, the Castle Rock Economic Development Corporation, Denver South, and the Northwest Douglas County Chamber of Commerce, I'm sorry, Chamber and Economic Development Corporation concerning the formation of the Douglas County Economic Development Collaborative. Mr. Martinez?
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, and that was a long list. So as you mentioned, the memorandum of understanding is to form the Douglas County Economic Development Collaborative in partnership with Douglas County, towns and cities, special districts, and economic development organizations within the county. And the collaborator will focus on increasing primary employment, economic development and recovery efforts, as well as proactive business development, marketing, branding, and special events among all the partners. There is no cost to the town to enter to this partnership, and that concludes my presentation. And happy to answer any questions.
Excellent. We'll start to my left, Councilman Dyak?
I have no questions.
Councilmember Barrington?
I believe you said there is no cost to the town.
No, the only cost will be as if, you know, we end up doing proactive business development and travel.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
And since it's a collaborative board, that cost on travel will be equally spread between all the participants, I take it? How will that work when there is a cost?
Yes, Councilmember Hefta, if there is a cost, if the municipalities, town, cities, or partners want to participate, they will have to carry, cover those costs for travel.
Their own towns will have to carry it. Okay. And you're going to meet on a quarterly basis, and there's going to be an agenda, and there's going to be milestones and goals coming out of this meeting for further economic development in Douglas County.
Yes, it'll be a very collaborative approach with plans and actions coming out from those meetings.
Okay, thank you very much.
Great. Councilman Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilmember Pogue?
No questions.
Councilman Rivero?
No questions.
With that, we'll open it up for public comment at 7:25. With anyone from the public wishing to make comment, see, and then we'll close it at 7:25, and we'll come back for final thoughts, just the reverse. Councilman Rivero?
Yeah, it was, obviously, I'm in support of this. The Metro EDC in Denver is, what I would say, is a bigger example of this, where all the economic development partners get together. If it's not the right fit for somebody, it may be a better fit for someone else, and they can talk about that, keeping that business in the region and in the metro Denver area, which Parker is a member of. And I know we're a member of the Metro EDC, and I think I see this as a smaller version in Douglas County, where maybe it's not the right fit for Lone Tree, it might fit in Parker, and vice versa. If it doesn't fit in Parker, we can, we can hand it off and say, maybe you should go look at Castle Rock, and still keeping those businesses or those developments within the county to better our county. I was encouraged when I saw membership of the partnership as a whole, seeing the library and knowing what they do for small business in this community was encouraging, but also seeing the school district. School district's not usually a player at the table, but in this case, I hope they are. They do sometimes in the charter efforts, take up some commercial properties, and I would love to see them involved in those decisions and understanding what the economic development side of those, those decisions are. So very, very encouraged by, by everybody in the partnership, being a partner of this. So well done.
Great. Councilmember Pogue?
Yeah, I too am encouraged by the enlarged partnership. However, I do have a couple of questions, and that is, do you also plan on, you know, bringing in any kind of an arrangement with the economic development groups in Arapahoe and Denver counties?
Great question, Councilmember Pogue. As Councilmember Rivero stated, this is not just a Douglas County regional opportunity, but it's also Metro Denver regional economic development opportunity, and we'll definitely be working with our partners in other counties, as well as Metro Denver Economic Development So, it'll continue those partnerships and enhancing them as well.
Thank you.
Councilman Hendricks?
I'm in favor of economic development, and thank you for your efforts.
Great. Councilman Dyak?
Yeah, you know, talking with our, specifically our local friends is kind of underrated. Most of us, most of the time, get talked at by people. But talking with people to kind of figure out what we're doing, where we're going, sharing ideas, hopefully creating synergies, both in vision, and maybe we can save some, save a few bucks by, you know, finding, finding things that we all do and buying it once instead of six times, I think, would be good. But to me, it's encouraging that we are now in a position, from an economic development standpoint, to kind of have that collaborative where we can sit down and start those discussions on a pretty regular basis. It's helped pretty good in the transportation area, and I can only assume it's going to do fantastically well in the economic development area. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
I think collaborative is the key word here. And anytime that we can support economic development and, you know, just help maybe retain or increase primary employment opportunities, that's definitely something that I am in support of. Thank you.
And Councilmember Hefta?
Too many times, folks think that they can get things accomplished on the phone or by Zoom and have a business relationship through that sort of contact. So, what this does, this collaborative does, is it brings together national site directors, brokers, developers, business leaders in person. And this is a place for them to get to know each other, to get to know the folks in the Douglas County community, and to interact, to bring greater business opportunities to our entire region. So, I think it shouldn't be lost that on anyone, just that you can get business done over the phone or on a Zoom. Bringing folks together in a room accomplishes a whole lot more. Wouldn't you agree, Mr. Martinez?
Councilmember Hefta, I totally agree. Economic development doesn't happen behind a desk. It actually happens out in the field, and it happens by engaging all those, all those people that you've talked about in the real estate and development business and really creating those partnerships. And secondly, I also think this is a great segue to that. On September 26, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., we're going to be holding a 2022 CEO Network event. And this will actually be the formal signing of this MLU among all our partners. And so, I know there was a save the date for you all to attend that, so looking forward to that.
Right. And I would love to attend one of these meetings if the mayor can't. Thank you, Mayor Tewberg.
With that, I will entertain a motion on ordinance number 9.351 on second reading.
I move to approve ordinance number 9.351 on second reading.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Pogue, seconded by Councilmember Hefta. Rivero?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes 6.0. With no other business for the town council, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Hendricks? Motion is made by Councilmember Pogue, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. Rivero?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
We're adjourned at 7:31. Have a good evening. And council, we do have a scout here working on his citizenship badge. So, anyway.